I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
I call the meeting to order. Welcome everybody. So this meeting is called to order. We welcome everybody out for our commission meeting tonight. We've had our pledge of allegiance and now we'll do our roll call.
Hey Commissioner Day?
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Here.
Commissioner Rube?
Here.
Commissioner Robertson's?
Here.
Commissioner Speaker?
Here.
Commissioner Terry?
Here.
And then for approval of minutes, I actually just have corrections for May 19.
Okay.
And just received the June 2nd. So how is everybody feeling about approving May 19 tonight and then take a look at June 2nd? Is that okay?
It's up to your commission.
Any other thoughts?
I just have a couple of corrections on the 19th, so that sounds good. Okay. And we'll move this second to...
Moving on. No courtesies, no proclamations. So we will have our board and commission reports and we'll start in commission.
Tim is going to give it.
I'm on and I will give it when it's my turn.
Okay.
All right, thanks. How about Commissioner Rube's?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Speaker?
I do, uh, we had a budget meeting for Slipknot Development. And the big topic was the membership dues again. And so the committee voted to require or to ask members to pay in at the $4.09 rate. Uh, I think we've been doing 238 before that. So percentage wise is a pretty big increase. It would put Lewistown at around $25,000 instead of, I think around like 15 last time, $25,000. Which is a big number, but if you think about it as an investment in economic strength of this community, it's a pretty small number for a very, very big amount of growth and development and business assistance saving. So I'm very much in favor of it, but it's something that, uh, if it's a concern that we need to talk about, um, otherwise we need to just budget for it, I would say. Uh, it's kind of a big, big story there. And then the annual meeting is in June, let's see here, June 26th, 26th in Roundup. And so there'll be a, a meeting and then their, like a board meeting and their annual meeting and then a tour of City and Local Mind.
So is that new amount already done deal or have they voted on it?
Um, we do have to vote on it still, the main committee or the main board, but very likely to pass. And then I guess the city can choose not to, um, pay it or negotiate something different, but the recommendation would be to pay that amount. And actually last year, a couple of counties paid that amount, um, anything else. Just because that's, that number is very much in line with other economic development entities from the state.
So would that be something you would discuss during budget review?
And they'd be happy to come talk to us about what they want it for, what they do, etc.
I think that would be a really, I mean, I think that would be a good idea. Uh, what's the, what is, what's the county, what's the county have to pay?
County would be $48,000 and they were fine with it.
And what do they pay now?
They would have been about 28 before this.
Um, we have a meeting, uh, Central Montana Foundation has a meeting on June 24th. Commissioner Robertson?
I am here and I could report on the airport port meeting if you'd like.
Yeah, that'd be great.
There's just, just three things to report. Number one is that it looks like we are going to have two new large, one or two, hard to tell yet, large aircraft hangars on taxiway E, which is directly across the taxiway from the Whedon Hangar, just to the west of Jack's Hangar, my hangar. So it looks like there could be two nice new hangars there. There are two major construction projects, um, scheduled for the airport. One is replacement of the large hangar door, the old World War II large hangar. There was a bid letting, uh, not at the meeting, but after that meeting, subsequent to that meeting. And, uh, there were three bids and the lowest of those bids was in the low 500, I think it was 527 was roughly the amount. And I'm told that that would be a, um, appropriate bid, but I'm waiting for more details on that. And the other large project that will happen again, this, this would be next year as with the hangar door, uh, next construction season, is a large taxiway project that the FAA within our region is putting a lot of money behind to upgrade the remaining taxiways that have not been upgraded at the airport, which is a huge investment in Lewis Town. That's the report that I have.
Thank you.
Was that 527,000?
You know, I, I, that is, I wouldn't quote me on that exact number. It was somewhere in that vicinity. I asked that of Brian Armour. He didn't have it in front of him, so we're getting a second hand. So Mr. Rube, I'm sorry, I don't have an exact number, but it, but it was considerably less than the other two bids, which were, uh, more than 50% higher than that number. So if that is, if that is an appropriate number, you might have a very good hangar door solution.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Then as far as the Park and Rec Department goes, um, we will be having an cleanup cleanup project on Wednesday, June 18.
18.
If you wanted to say 19, then it's enough at 19. June 8, uh, June, June of 18th, we'll do lead out at Creeks, uh, East Fork and we'll be doing all kinds of fun cleanup projects. Bring your meat eaters, gloves, slugs.
Put down.
Tools.
Six o'clock.
And that's actually in lieu of a June and July meeting for us to do that cleanup event. So we will have nothing really pertinent to report on Park and Rec for a little bit. And then there's other information that's coming with the city manager's report regarding that. Right? Any other, um, things for the boards or commission to come on? We will have our city manager report.
So this is our last meeting before the 4th of July. Um, so a reminder that 4th of July, we do allow fireworks inside the city limits, the day of the 4th. Um, they can be done on private property and have to be a safe distance away from structures. Um, we also don't allow, don't allow them on, uh, the streets, sidewalks, or in our parks. Um, and ask people to just make sure that the mess that they can cause are cleaned up. Um, there's also a ton of festivities planned for that day. Uh, the chamber did a great job getting that information out. Um, and so if people have, want to see what's going on, uh, there's a lot to do that day, uh, but check out their Facebook page, um, or website for more information. Um, like Lorraine said, uh, the East Fork cleanup is the 18th. Everyone's welcome. Uh, we are focusing on mostly mowing and trimming and things like that. And then Kelly, um, our recreation director, has a lot of volunteers lined up for activities out there as well. Um, there's also a public hearing or a public meeting, uh, surrounding our Central Montana Regional Transportation Plan. I touched on it briefly at our last meeting. Um, but that meeting for the public, um, is tomorrow, which is June 17th. At the high school from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. There is also an opportunity for people to participate virtually and that, uh, website is listed there. Lots of good efforts being, uh, had on that and, um, I'm sure they have a great presentation kind of laid out. They're just wanting to hear from the public on their thoughts there. Um, there'll also be another one the next week and that's Wednesday, June 25th. Uh, this one is on the Walnut and Ash Street improvement. So that's the Ash Street Bridge that we've talked about a couple of times. It also, uh, will allow for pedestrian improvements in that area, sidewalks over the bridge and along the school. Um, and so that is the 25th, also from 4 till 6 at the high school. And then Wednesday, June 18th, before our cleanup, uh, there is a grand reopening ceremony for the Civic Center Gym. If you haven't stopped by, I encourage you guys to go check it out. It's beautiful. Um, there'll be a short presentation. Um, I think Jim Daniels is going to make the presentation and at least, uh, take a shot on the basketball court. Um, but a huge thanks to all those that made it possible to keep the gym around for our community for another hundred years. We will be, uh, doing a flyer, uh, in partnership with Water and Environmental Technologies, also abbreviated as WET. And so they are in the process of mailing out flyers to some of our water customers, uh, asking for more information on their service lines. And so this is the point from the main line to the house, uh, that they're looking for. Uh, there is, uh, legislative change that requires, uh, water systems to work on gathering this information. And so it's called our lead service line inventory. And, uh, they have some grant funding available to offer this kind of technical support to municipalities. And so, um, people can, they'll get them in the mail, uh, if it's necessary, if we need more information on them. Uh, tells you how to, uh, best identify your service line and gives many options for people to return those, including just filling out the paper that they receive. They can drop it by the office or mail it in. Um, and there's also an option that people can submit it online as well. There are final Mondays in the month of June and so, uh, we just kind of want to leave it up to you if, uh, there's any desire to have a training or work session for the commission. We don't, uh, anticipate any need for it, but it is an option, uh, to do that. Uh, at this point, uh, we have it scheduled to really take a look at our budget. Uh, the second meeting of July, uh, spend the committee as a whole looking at that. Um, Nikki did prepare a couple of reports for you with just kind of a brief introduction to what you're looking at. So one is our budget versus actuals, um, through the month of May. And, uh, these are what we give our department heads. Uh, Nikki and I will review these regularly to make sure, uh, the departments are operating within their budget. And then the second one is, uh, the start of our new budget. And so this is, uh, budget prep and just shows, uh, the basic budget and then the departments will, uh, take an opportunity and give us their feedback as far as setting of priorities and things like that, uh, for the next year. But a good start in place. Uh, if you guys have questions after you look at those, feel free to reach out, um, and we can do something there. So I did want to give a few minutes and see if anybody would like to do something on June 30th.
Any thoughts from the commission? Commissioner Robertson, did you have any thoughts or suggestions or desire to have a training for, I guess desire is not the right word.
I'm checking, I'm checking my, I'm checking my calendar right now to find out where I am.
I'll be very busy on June 30th.
You will.
Yeah, I, I'm afraid I'm, I'm out of, uh, out of town on the 30th.
We can always schedule for another time. Yeah. If needed.
Okay, so as it stands now, there will be no commission of a whole or meeting the night of the 30th for training.
Um, and then last but certainly not least, um, summer events are starting at Creekside. Um, the Shakespeare in the Park is coming up, uh, June, or June 25th at 6:30. And then, uh, come in the precursor to Center Fest with a concert in the park. Uh, Susan Gibson, who is a great artist, if you haven't heard her before, will be performing a free concert at 7:00 p.m. on June 25th.
All I have, thank you. Any questions for someone regarding the report? Commissioner Robertson?
I'm good, no, no question, sorry. It's, uh, it's slow to hit the, turn the mute on and off, sorry.
We are now going to hear public comment from our audience and this is for any non-agenda items. So if there's any...
I'm Peggy Butler and I'm the director of Saving Animals from euthanasia, which is the animal rescue here in town, has been for the last 11 years. As some of you may have seen in the paper, there was a lovely article about our shelter getting ready to break ground. And a few days after that article came out, I got a phone call from the people from Hanover Junction and they wanted to meet with us last Tuesday. And so Chris and I went and they have made it very clear to us that under no circumstances will they allow a shelter to come into that area. And that is because the designation of it being a strictly commercial area, when we bought the place, it is now somehow, I don't even know how that happens, has become residential commercial and majority of those people are living out there and they do not want to see an animal shelter come in out there. So number one, we're like, okay, why weren't we notified of this? Our son has been up for almost three years and they're just waiting till the 11th hour to come and say something to us in objection to having the shelter out there. I'm going to go to the county commissioners to find out about that because of course it's in the county. So now this has created quite a dilemma for us because now we're going to have to sell that lot and look for another piece of land. What we're coming to you guys with is, you know, the possibility of us using the city pound temporarily, um, as a possibility, not really doing anything to it, but just being able to use the facility because I know it isn't used very much, uh, by the city. And we would take care of your animals as well if any came in from the city. Um, just throwing that out there for you to consider.
I would say that we would still be willing to negotiate. I think we had kind of an MOU or like a lease where it was this mutual agreed upon thing where we wanted, if we had Dr. Caffey needed, house a place for them otherwise. So Tyler was not the attorney. Um, I don't even remember who was the last, who was drafted.
I don't either.
We can kind of dust that off and it'll be a good starting place to consider.
Yeah, that'd be great if you guys would just consider that as sort of a temporary situation. You know, because now this is throwing us back to square one. Like now we have to find some other place to build and we have just gotten in some substantial money from several estates. So we had the money to move forward with this, but now we have to find another place to go. So temporarily, if you guys, if we could work out something, um, with the city, that would be great.
And I think we could move it on pretty quick.
Yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, so whatever that would take for us to do that.
Do, will you make sure you leave a good email or a phone number?
Yes, I will, I will, absolutely. Thank you.
May I ask for clarification? It was hard to hear the address of the site that you're not able to work at now, that you were intending to be building it?
Yeah, it is called the Hanover Junction.
The Hanover Junction by Axeman and some of those storage units by High Heat out there.
So that is considered county property?
It's in the county.
And it's known as residential commercial?
It would be their, um, probably in their covenants or something like that because the county doesn't have them.
So it's the covenants that are telling you you can't build there?
Well, when we purchased the piece of property, there weren't, there was no association developed yet. Now there is.
Yeah, okay, so the association is telling you, like, I'm just wondering why they have the authority to tell you. They must have covenants or something.
Well, they, they made copies of the papers and everything for the covenants and...
Yeah, I think they have, in the three years that we bought the place, they obviously have formed an association with the covenants and the rules and the regulations and all that. So we will be talking to an attorney because at the time we bought the place, that was not the case. And now they're trying to force us out because they have formed this association.
Yeah.
So you would be as, just a quick point of question or clarification, as, as an owner, you should be a member of that association and should have been notified of those changes and, and, uh, had a voice in the creation of those changes, I would think.
Uh, that's what I got too, Tim, and we were never notified of anything.
Yeah, seeking counsel might be a good thing.
Our thoughts, exactly.
Is there anything you need us to do to say that they can use the pound right now?
Uh, we have a pretty good MOU and I think it was agreeable to both of us and then you just kind of moved in this other direction. Uh, so we'll dust it off in the next couple of weeks, we should be able to have something.
Exactly, that would be great.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding the public comments that we just heard? Right, we're going to move on to any other public comment at all. All right, regarding the consent agenda, what questions do we have for the city?
Page two, number 57145. The wording appears to say that we're using street funds for trails.
Um, there is a portion of it, that is, yep.
Okay.
So is that a grant or anything?
Uh, no, it's a grant and a majority of it is the front of the trails. Yes, the majority is a grant.
Oh, it's the 73,000.
You were telling us and that was the direction that, yes, permission.
And then on page five, number 57164, they're talking about, um, they had to move some sprinklers because of the snack shack being built that we just looked at, was that the deal?
Yes, yep. Um, so the former controls.
Okay.
Were in the snack shack and so they had to temporarily that.
The master box was, okay.
And of course, front day is a huge park and a big asset, so we couldn't let it dry.
I like your snack shack abbreviation.
So I, I just had some questions on like, that I saw on four, seven. Is there a lot of cost sharing going on in this particular one with the exact amounts being split up and distributed? So like the first one would be on the bottom of page four.
Okay.
Um, so like in public works, it's just the general supply or something like that and it's utilized by the four departments that are over there, they'll split out and all four of them each or something.
So I'm assuming then that's the same thing at the bottom of seven?
No. Those are our fields, our water fields, the water rungs.
Okay. And then some of those are not really the exact same.
Well, because that's part of the park ordinance.
And then on page nine, is that, is there something missing there or is there a top on 57191?
It looks like that, but no, it isn't. So what it is, is it says 57191 and then it says Montana State University. Then she put that description down there that it was billed index account and then it shows you what was paid.
Okay.
So it just is based there because of the note she put in there.
Okay, that makes sense.
It does look funny. And that's a subscription.
The only other question I have, one, very, just out of curiosity, the very, very last page, there's like the reverse, something double that says for fraud. Is there fraud tampering or one of the...
There was, one of our creditors.
That all got rectified. It looks like the, there's like an ounce.
We appealed it and so through that process, then they prepped it back and canceled the card, which is never in fact.
Okay, awesome.
I had a quick question. Just, just remind me on page four, 57158 to Griffith, uh, what was the, what's that big enough for? Is that the water treatment plant?
Nope, Griffith is doing our water project and so we just finished the portion over on Erie Street and they were down, uh, at Brassy now. And so that is a portion of our, page two of the water.
Any other questions regarding the consent agenda? Commissioner Robertson, do you have any questions regarding the agenda?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll sit in. You have a motion to approve with Commissioner Terry and, uh, second from Commissioner Hewitt. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda is approved and we'll now move on to our regular agenda for the evening with item one, discussion and action on reviewing and approving the Lewistown Tree Removal Program Policy, City Manager Hall of Fame.
Yep, um, so this is a document you may remember seeing not that long ago. Uh, this is a draft of some revisions to our tree assistance policy. Um, you can see this right through and replace, uh, bits that I have, uh, would like to discuss tonight. Uh, so in the past, this program was only used for removal of hazardous or diseased trees. Uh, what I would propose is that we may also use this fund, these funds to trim or prune trees, um, that still are diseased or hazardous and on public property, uh, but may not be to that point of needing removal. Um, and so you can see, I said that they may be used to trim and then added a line in there that the tree is otherwise hazardous to the public. Uh, so maybe it has a dead limb hanging over a street or road in our parks, things like that. Um, again, each individual tree can't add up to more than $10,000 or it has to come back to you guys. Um, the process would be much the same for the customers to come in and request that. Um, and then we can utilize this assistance, uh, for a handful of things that include, uh, tree removals, some providing, providing traffic control to contractor, uh, including barricades, uh, and then disposal of the tree. In the past, it didn't really specify what the co-pay was, so you'll see a section added in there, um, that the co-pay for the program, I'm proposing it be $500 per tree, uh, but we also wanted to incentivize people to plant trees back. And so, uh, we would be willing to offer up a hundred dollar gift certificate, uh, for each tree, uh, using this program, uh, so that they could purchase a approved tree, uh, to be planted at their property.
So this looks like the property owner gives the gift certificate, might be.
Uh, so we would provide a gift certificate to them, and, uh, coordinate with our local greenhouses who could redeem those gifts.
So that language should be given.
Given, given, not giving, that's what she said.
Is that, is that right?
Yep, you're exactly right, given.
I mean, because that's great, if they want to give us something.
That too.
Feel well for that. Does the tree have to be planted in the same spot?
No, I said on the property, like, at the same location, but I don't think, maybe if they want it in the backyard, then maybe not in the boulevard. I don't think we want to be that specific. Uh, and we do have a list of, uh, trees that have been recommended by the urban forester, by the greenhouses, that are a, um, site appropriate for different locations, so smaller trees in the boulevard, things like that. Um, but also are disease resistant and hardy for our climate.
So I think that sentence should read, the property owner will also be given a one hundred dollar gift certificate per tree for the purchase of a new tree to be planted on the property.
All right, any other questions for our city manager?
Is, would any of the trimmings, piermings, et cetera, be cost less than five hundred dollars?
Um, typically, they don't, I mean, if we have to hire a contractor, um, they come close to that, but it does not cover any of the labor costs or disposal of it.
Okay, so it'll always add up to that?
It has so far.
Okay. Okay.
And previously, the copay was two hundred dollars.
Maybe that's what it was, I know you said you were going to increase it.
How, how often is the existing one accessed right now?
A lot.
A lot, yes. So this would really be a?
Um, but typically, I mean, again, it's those big trees that are costly and difficult to remove and stuff that we find most people coming in and utilizing it, I think if it was a smaller, easier tree, they'd just kind of take care of it.
Commissioner Day, I move to approve the Lewistown Tree Removal Program Policy.
Certainly.
We have a motion from Commissioner Terry and a second from Commissioner Will. Do we have any other questions for the city manager, or any questions from the public?
I guess I should say with those questions.
Okay, go ahead and state your name.
Oh, I'll be answering, and a question, and I want to just clarify, so if you just trim them, if it was required to be trimmed and not removed, that would also be five hundred dollars, is that what I'm hearing? Okay.
If you're using city resources, if you're just going out there to trim.
No, no, if we had to say trim trees, it'd be five hundred bucks to trim, not, not that was removed, that was trimmed, I just want them the same price. Because I, you talked originally, that might be two separate prices. The other thing is, have you guys done your new, um, budget yet? So we don't know if it'll be funded quite yet.
Correct, yep, if, if it's a perk tonight, we'll prepare a budget that includes it.
Okay, and did you guys, did you even fund it last year?
No.
Oh, no, okay, so what, no idea, okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner.
So basically, what we're working on here is adding the trimming of the trees.
Adding the trimming and increasing the cost, which about doubles the cost.
Right.
Also gives them a credit back for a new tree.
Yes, if a property owner is able to remove the tree, would the city help with disposal of all that wood?
Um, there would still be, I mean, we have to watch that, because it still costs us, uh, labor and stuff like that to haul it off and dispose of it, especially because we have to take ownership of that wood. And so then we're burning it, it's not just the one time, we also have to burn it in the winter and things like that.
So basically, any times a city employees are being used for any type of labor or work regarding these projects would be part of this program?
Correct.
And, and so that would, uh, make it necessary for the five hundred dollar copay?
Yes, yep.
Okay. I mean, some people have no way of getting rid of all that, I mean, that wood.
I mean, the commission could choose, um, to amend it, something like that, and add a line in there that on a case by case, we could look at, um, accepting, um, you know, individuals to drop off, I caution that, because then we're running a landfill and we'll need a license from.
I, I just wanted to know, I, I kind of like it the way it is, but I'm sure that question's going to come up.
Yep.
Um, if the city's involved, then the city's insurance play into that, liability insurance?
So if these trees are located on the public freeway, our liability insurance is also already kind of involved.
Okay.
Um, but we require the contractors that we contract with to have the proper bonding.
So if you're using their insurance primarily, or is, I understand there's a backlog of people wanting to have trees removed?
Um, we typically get more requests than the contractors have time to do.
Right.
Um, or the fundings that we have available to do the work.
So that, there is already a list started, is there?
There has been people coming in and getting put on a list, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Is that a large amount of people, or are we talking five or six, or?
I would guess less than ten.
Any other questions regarding the tree removal program policy? Commissioner Robertson, any questions, you're good?
No, I have no questions, thank you, mine were answered.
Okay, well, Brian, we'll do a little call though.
Okay. We are approving the Lewistown Tree Removal Program Policy with the corrections. Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rubes?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We'll now have a discussion, um, on the ordinance amending the Lewistown City Code Section ten, five, three, Designating Snow Route Areas as Tier One, and Tier Two Priorities, Creating Parking Restrictions for Snow Routes, and Amending Penalties, um, City Manager Holly Phelps.
Yep, um, so you have before you, um, kind of what we're proposing, that the new snow, uh, route ordinance would look like. It would have the tier one and tier two, and those roads, uh, that were shown on the map is red or black in the past, have been listed in the ordinance, and so again, the parking limitations would be on November first through May first, it's adding another month. Um, and then the tier one snow route are the critical driving routes throughout. Um, these one in the event of a snow event, um, so that would be two inches of accumulation, or a prediction of two inches, um, would be declared as a snow event, and that would mean no person, uh, could park on the tier one route, um, any day during the, that type period, so again, November through May. Um, it would be the responsibility of the registered owner, uh, to make sure the vehicle was moved, otherwise they'd face the penalty. Um, and could possibly be towed. Uh, the tier two is, um, the odd and even parking. And so, again, a priority route, um, but there is some limited parking on the streets. Um, and they have the same penalties too, so. Uh, you can see the list, again, it's the same as the map, uh, the only exception is we added, um, lines and continued it around the jail. Um, but a snow amount is, may be declared if Noah forecasted snow accumulation of greater than two inches, or if it is actually an accumulation of two inches or more, uh, for a twenty-four hour period, um, from twelve PM to twelve PM, so that's new. Um, vehicles found in violation of that, um, could be towed or ticketed. Again, it would be the registered owner, uh, so if you're at the repair shop and they forget to, uh, it could still be a ticket for the owner. Uh, the penalties would be, um, twenty-five dollars for the first offense, the second offense, um, would go up to fifty dollars. Third offense, or subsequent offense is a hundred dollars. Uh, those are a year, like, uh, so the first offense starts the year calendar clock starts then? January one, uh, no, it would be from that ticket, right?
From the ticket. So if they, uh, if they said they're guilty of it on June sixteen, you'd have to go all three sixty-five days before getting another ticket. If you got a second ticket within that three hundred sixty-five days, then that ratchets up to the higher penalty.
So, I mean, in theory, they could span a couple of years or something like that.
And, uh, remind us again, how does that conviction work? Is that going to all go through?
Uh, it'd be through the city court.
Through state court?
Yes, it'd be enforced by Lewistown Police Department.
And then there is some notice requirement, um, see that annually, we've got to, uh, publish this. Um, and it, you know, going to show the map and tell people all about it, um, so it's in the newspaper or in the web and, um, so it could be, and it would probably be all, you know, on the radio newspaper, websites, Facebook, all of those things. And probably posted in City Hall and Public Works in a few locations.
And, and I can see that reaching about sixty-five percent of the people at all.
Um, and for sure in the beginning, um, you know, I think Ernie talked about in some of our meetings, uh, working with the staff to do some door-to-door hangers, uh, and go and hang something, especially that first year. But we have to recognize that there may be, uh, rentals and things like that. So, uh, we can't expect Public Works to do that on an annual basis.
Yeah.
Uh, but we were going to do our part to make sure that at least the majority of people would have the opportunity to hear about it or see it.
Um, my question is, on the a snow event may be declared, who's declaring it?
Um, so it does say in here, um, on the very last page, um, that it would be the city manager or their designated.
Uh, but it says in two inches of snow have been, or a snow event has been declared, then the city manager may notify the public. So it's not saying the city manager's declaring it?
Oh, that's something, uh, if you go to page one.
One?
So that'd be under section A one.
Well, there is.
And the snow route, or the snow event is only in regard to tier one. So it'd be clear the tier one, uh, when the snow event's declared for, because again, uh, say Noah is predicting two inches of snow, uh, then Holly could say snow event, or if Noah's wrong and there's two inches of snow that comes, it could be declared a snow event, that would trigger it. Uh, again, the snow events only in regard to tier one. Uh, the tier two designation, though, just to be clear, that, that's through the entire November one to May one time period. So that, that's always in effect during the snow route time, but the tier one only comes into play for the snow event.
Would we be keeping those areas, like it said, that could be non-parking? During the hours of what have you?
That's what it's gonna happen. Um, so main streets would still be like that? Yeah.
Commissioner Day, I have a question.
Yeah, Commissioner Robertson?
Uh, uh, I like what, um, Mr. West has put together here, I have one question on page two, the bottom, under tier two snow routes, where it defines even calendar days, or under section two, um, A, even calendar days, I think there could be confusion, and maybe I'm just missing it in here as to, what, what, what is defined as an even calendar day, or an odd calendar day? I know what it means, anecdotally, I guess, or, or experientially, but, um, if a person was to, let's just say, not arrived at their residence until two AM, and now they look at their phone and it's an odd calendar day, um, because the date's changed, how do we define the calendar day as being prior to midnight? Or, you know, as defined as the calendar day at twelve PM or six PM that, of that day, and until seven AM the next day? Just to make sure that there isn't, um, I could see leaving the western and driving home, and then ending up, uh, there at two AM and say, the date's wrong.
And, uh, Commissioner Robertson, um, what we could do there is put a definition in this section.
I, I think that'd be helpful.
So, maybe we'll make a new section or a sub-A, and that would define, uh, those times that you're talking about?
I think, I think that would be good, just for clarity's sake, to know that it can, it starts that evening and goes until maybe seven AM the next morning, so that somebody doesn't park at two AM and get in the way of the snowplows.
Oh, and that's a great point, this is just a discussion I have tonight. Um, if we continue to have questions and little tweaks, that's wonderful, otherwise, our hopes are that we have it before you guys get a next meeting for some, and can work with the media to get it out to the public.
Can I just add, um, this, this committee that has worked on this, certainly understands that the public could be concerned about this, the imposition of this ordinance, odd even, moving their vehicles, that kind of thing. Um, and this time of the year, it's hard to remember, maybe, that we had this five or six feet of snow on the ground, and that we were clawed for three or four weeks. So, anything the media can do to help remind people that this is an answer to the, the huge pushback we had from the public about snow removal issues this winter? Will?
I, I see a large, uh, communication problem. If this snow is four inches, uh, between eight and ten o'clock at night, yeah, how are we going to let these people know that the next morning at seven AM, the plows are out? We're not going to be able to do that, so we might have to work on something there also.
Well, again, and we've defined where people can find that out, so if it's predicted, um, you know, as of noon, till noon the next day, um, if it's predicted as two or more, they shouldn't be parking. And again, that is only a very limited number of streets. Um, and many of them are already on the snow routes where they weren't allowed to park in the past at all.
And I, I'm never worried about two inches of snow, it's the two feet that concern me, but.
And the hope that the snow event will be declared before we even, you know, you want it declared before you get a two inches now.
Correct.
Commissioner Rubes?
All time frame, no matter what snow event or snowfall, that's habitual.
Even if there's no snow. For tier two.
Yeah, for tier two.
So that should, the even odd should be the normal, uh, parking for those, those folks, once, once they get an understanding of it, as.
That's easy to, yeah.
Commissioner said is communication, but the hope and the intent is that that's just the regular, uh, parking for those streets in those months.
Commissioner Robertson?
So I was just going to agree with Mr. Rubes, that I understand that there's a communication issue and a learning process to change behavior. I would hope that the people that, who, who regularly park on snow routes would become more sensitized to the fact that they're on a snow route, and it's winter, and it might snow, I probably should move my vehicle off that so that I don't get a ticket. And, uh, you know, as we talked about it in the committee, it was, really became an issue of, well, I, we don't know what's to affect chain. what's to affect chain to get those snow routes cleared, which really needs to happen.
And as Holly said too, that there's going to be some working with the public. This isn't Drake County and we're not going out there with a ticket book. Again, the purpose is, or the idea is to work with the community, just get it to the same page. It'll be bumpy, of course, but hopefully after the first year, it'll be a little better.
I would add, I would add Chief Janis, I'm sorry.
A lot of these are not in residential areas. You know, our Tier One is primarily business districts, hospitals, schools, things like that. They're already on the snow route.
Any other comments or discussion? I did some digging into Midwest areas where I was surprised how cities use new systems. Because at first I was like, even, oh, that can happen, but there are so many other communities and cities that are much larger than ours that this is an effective way of keeping.
We'll leave it to our Midwesterner, Tim Robertson.
All right, we'll move on with the agenda. There's no more comments regarding snow. Well, action on authorizing the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding between the Montana Department of Transportation and the Center of Lewistown for the State-Funded City Park Rest Area Maintenance Program for fiscal year of 2026. City Manager Holly Phelps?
Yes. So in front of you, you have an MOU between the city and COT for the Kualanis Rest Area. As many of you know, and the name implies, we partner with the Kualanis Club to maintain that facility and really serve as just kind of a pass-through between the Kualanis expenditures and the state's reimbursement. And so they state, or its eligible expenses include janitorial supplies, garbage, ground maintenance, and things like that to maintain the facility. This year, that amount is almost $7,000 for that facility, but it's been a great partnership over a lot of years.
Any questions from the commission?
I move to approve the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding between the MDOT and the City of Lewistown for the State-Funded City Park Rest Area Maintenance Program FY 2026, Kualanis Park and Wood Rest Area.
Awesome. We have a motion from Commissioner Terry and a second from Commissioner Spica. Any other comments or questions from the commission? Commissioner Rube?
So as far as, it says the cleaning down here, is that done by the city employees?
Nope, it's Kualanis.
Kualanis does that, and then they submit a cost to the city?
They submit invoices for all of their expenses.
And then the city gets that money back from the MDT? Sort of like that?
Yeah. It's like for like the toilet paper and stuff.
Toilet paper, garbage services, like Lewistown, the schools, or western energy, water testing. And then also they charge, they come up with an amount they charge for maintenance. Because they take turns out there doing it.
So is the water up there potable?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's why they test it.
Yeah, well, as soon as you said that, I had a light came on.
There is a desire at some point to loop that park into sewer and water. Correct? Ms. Phelps?
Yep, it's very near the area, so I think that would be a logical direction in the end. Right now, they're on a private well.
Right.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Okay, we are going to approve authorizing the city manager to sign the MOU with the Montana Department of Transportation. Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rube?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Spica?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Discussion and action on approving a business license for Big Dog Solar. City Manager Holly Phelps?
Yes, so again, another electrical contractor coming into our area to do some work. These individuals install solar panels and electrical work necessary to hook them up. And so, as you all recall, our ordinances require a commission approval, and so that's why we're here today.
And we approve the business license for Big Dog Solar.
A second. Thank you. We have a question from Commissioner Spica and a second from Commissioner Terry. Any other questions regarding Big Dog Solar? Commissioner Rube?
Do private enterprises like this ever have to submit letters of recommendation from previous customers to the city?
They do not. That's not one of our requirements.
They don't? Maybe they should.
How is that outlined on whether or not you require it after a month or one day?
Yep, so we have specific requirements for interns, for surety bonds, for things like that. I would think that whoever is hiring them should be asking for those letters. Not mess over the city.
Because most likely, that's how they're coming in, and they have an existing job, and then they need to do the formal.
Somebody's recruited them. If the city does get complaints from people that are maybe not having good business practices or things like that, and we do have a process to revoke business licenses. And so it also takes commission approval as well. So, but normally that's because of them not having good business practices or following through with their commitments.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Okay, we're approving a business license for Big Dog Solar. Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rube?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Spica?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to our final item on the agenda, discussion and action on reappointing Patty Turk to another three-year term on the Board of Adjustments. City Manager Holly Phelps?
Yep, so when Patty left the city commission, she wanted to stay engaged, and so she and Gail both agreed to serve on a couple of our boards. And so Patty's first term on the Board of Adjustments had lapsed earlier this year. Again, we do plan on absorbing the Board of Adjustments in our planning commission, but just haven't got that accomplished yet. And so Patty's agreed to be reappointed to that board. And that way, it allows us to make sure that we're processing variances and things like that in a timely manner. And so I think it would be great if we reappointed her for the time being.
I'll move that we reappoint Patty Turk to the Board of Adjustment. We have a motion from Commissioner Hewitt and a second from Commissioner Spica. Any other questions regarding the Board of Adjustment appointment? Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
All right, we're reappointing Patty Turk for another three-year term. Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rube?
Aye.
Commissioner Robertson?
Aye.
Commissioner Spica?
Aye.
Commissioner Terry?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to citizen requests. Do we have any requests for our citizens tonight? I'm online. Okay, awesome. Okay, we'll go on to our commissioners' minutes. Let's start with Commissioner Robertson.
I have nothing to report, nothing to discuss this evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Terry?
Just to keep it rolling the loop, probably won't be around much of July. I will try to join virtually if I can, but I'm going to kind of go radio silence for the month of July.
Commissioner Spica?
Nothing tonight.
Commissioner Rube?
Nothing.
Commissioner Hewitt? Well, it seems that I, every time you guys go up to the water plant, I'm gone.
You let me know when you're here, that's good. Oh, I get it.
Can I go off and tour?
Yes, you may.
Commissioner Hewitt, I actually haven't gone the last two tours for that too, so I would love to join.
It's a nice day and when it's not cold and windy and wet and...
That sounds great. Awesome, and then I just wanted to comment on, we had a lovely tour of the pool tonight. It did not feel like cool weather, but it definitely looked and smelled. All the guards were there doing their training, and it was really neat to be able to see everything in action and all the wonderful progress that that area of our city has happened with. Summertime, I guess. Yeah, that was really a neat, a neat tour. And I have no other comments either at this time. At this time, none. So thank you, everyone, and any other comments for the good of order? Our meeting is adjourned.